Good evening, we'll call a meeting to order and I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Wilson-Farjen?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here. I'll ask for a report on the posting of the agenda, please, by Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday, July the 18th. Additionally, tonight, the council has before them items concerning combination, the Housing Authority and Community Redevelopment Agency joint item. Additionally, you have Item 2, 8, and Number 9. I've also been informed that the council is aware that Item Number 4, the memorandum of understanding, has been revised, and you'll have that given to you during that time.
Very good, thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now turn to public comments. The council's pleasure tonight is, for all of you that are here, and there are a number of cards on Item 2, which is the resale restrictions, you will be called when Item 2 is agendized, so that you'll hold your public comments until the Item 2 comes forward, and we'll call you at that time. Otherwise, anyone else wishing to make public comments? I have two cards here, and I don't know if they are related to Item 2 or not. Tim Overdorf?
Yes.
You related to the resale, sir?
Yes.
I'll put you in Item 2 when it comes forward, you can speak then, thank you. And Sandy Cunningham?
Yes.
Sandy, are you here on resale also?
Yeah.
Resale?
Yes.
And we'll call you at Item 2, is that all right? Very good, thank you. Now, the remaining cards, Mr. Oden needs to be yours, the remaining cards for public comments, I have Mr. Ed Kibbe, Carolyn Miller-French, is it French or Frank?
Frank.
Thank you. And El Sue Lofton, followed by Bob Studebaker.
I've just been called.
Want to talk to him first?
I need to talk to him.
I'll put him on the back. Carolyn, you want to come forward, please? He's not in trouble, that was our planning director, that's Ed Kibbe from the BIA, they're working on some deal points on the park fees, he's not in trouble, please. Don't be afraid to come up, you will not be escorted out of the room, it's all right. Good evening and welcome, you'll have three minutes, and the clock counts down from three.
Thank you very much, my name is Carolyn Miller-French, I live at 16 Club Circle in Eldorado. I hope this is the last time you'll have to look at my face. For the last ten-some years, you all have followed and gone ridden along with us on a long, bumpy, curvy road, it was a costly road. First, you with the rent control office and their commissioners, helping us to keep affordable rents, the planning department and its commissioner, and seeing, watching out for us with the tenant impact report, the city attorney who has done a marvelous job in helping protect us. We want to thank the past and council members and mayors who have driven that road with us. And that brings us to the bump in the road and the agreement before you tonight. It's not the tentative agreement that you heard read at a council meeting a few weeks ago, but it's pretty much the same. And I am concerned on one issue in that agreement, and that is the time limit that they have set for the close of escrows for the low-income residents. I'm hoping that that can be resolved at a later date, though, between the residents and the park owner. We want to thank you and appreciate the financial assistance for our moderate-income residents, that's going to help a lot of us in our mortgages. I know it's been a hard pill for some of you to swallow, to have to vote on some of the issues the way you've had to vote, and we do appreciate that, though. And although this isn't the agreement that we had hoped for, I respectfully request that you do approve it tonight, because it does benefit financially a lot of our residents, both in the rent cap and the financial assistance that you are so grateful to afford our moderate We could not have survived this bumpy road without you, and on behalf of myself and the residents of Eldorado, we thank you sincerely very much for all the help you've provided us. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Lofton, followed by Bob Studebaker, please.
I'm here on behalf of Eldorado Palm Springs Limited, and would like to thank, in particular, the city attorney's office, as well as your redevelopment office, and working to form an agreement that would assist the low-income and the moderate-income people in the park, and to thank each of you for your patience, endurance, and care that you've given to this project. With that, on behalf of the applicant, I request that you approve the agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bob Studebaker, I'm also with the Eldorado conversion, I want to speak on that. I sent the mayor a letter about three weeks ago, and I, with just a question in it, and I wanted to ask the same question to the city council. We're all familiar with the trials and tribulations that this thing has gone through. The appeals court reversed and found in favor of the owner, and said we could come back if, only if this was proven to be a sham. You commissioned an appraisal, and you spent the city's taxpayers' money on the appraisal, and it came out that the owner was overcharging us, each and every one of us, by about $22,000. Now, when you, what I asked the mayor was, what figure did you have in mind when you commissioned the appraisal that would trigger this as being a sham, if $22,000 didn't do it? Now, you're going to give $5,000, or $500,000 to the lower-income people, and yet you're going to let him take us for 8.3 million. I think we could have gone back to the appeals court with that figure, and that was the question I asked the mayor, and that's the question I ask you, and I think you should tell the taxpayers why you're spending $500,000 when this guy has taken us each for $22,000. Thank you.
Mr. Ed Kibbe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council person's speaking on the Quimby ordinance, and I'm told that you are going to get two choices tonight, one with $66,000 and one without $66,000, which is the mitigation ordinance. The building industry would like to have a nice, clean ordinance under the Quimby Act without $66,000. The staff will tell you that they're putting it in there for apartments. I've asked why, just apartments, Quimby doesn't cover infill housing, it doesn't cover individual housing, it only covers map housing, that's it. It doesn't make any sense to dirty up your ordinance with two completely different ordinances. Quimby, as I've said, has within it a nexus statement, there's no problem, if you fit Quimby, you have nexus. $66,000 requires a specific nexus, that nexus has to be delivered prior to adoption of the ordinance. You have not done a nexus study for this, so if you were to include $66,000, you would be adopting an ordinance without the required nexus document, the needs analysis, and the study to provide nexus, for only apartments. The building industry has said, we want everybody covered, and we have suggested that you adopt a plain Quimby, immediately go back to the drawing boards, do a parks ordinance under $66,000. The parks ordinance would include all new building, everything that goes up, and in that, we would request that you would put language that would say, if you paid Quimby fees, those Quimby fees are credited against your fee out of the park ordinance, and that way, everybody is paying their fair share for parks within the city of Palm Springs. I ask you again, please, adopt the ordinance that will be submitted tonight without $66,000, you will get all you want and more if you do it the way I suggest. If you include $66,000 with the Quimby ordinance, you will be needlessly dirtying up an ordinance, if you will, and causing it to be open to challenge, for many reasons, but primarily because you have not completed a nexus needs analysis for apartments in these, as required under $66,000. So, you'll have two ordinances, one with, one without $66,000. We would request that you adopt the one without $66,000. Direct staff to go back, do a parks ordinance under $66,000, and get all the money you need, and everybody pays a fair share. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That completes the request to speak cards, anyone else wishing to address the council on any item shy of Item 2, please come forward at this time. Very good, seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll turn now to the Housing Authority and the Community Redevelopment Agency, and I believe we'll be meeting in joint session. And with that, members of the Authority and the Agency, we have one item, Takwitz Court Apartments, and I'll turn to Mr. Ready for his staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would ask Mr. Canard to give the report on this issue, please, it is a bond measure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the Authority, the action before you is to approve a resolution authorizing a subordination agreement for the Takwitz Court Apartments bond issues with Corporate Fund for Housing, those are the owners of the property. Essentially, this is a housekeeping item, they had to redo their bond issue after some format wasn't followed last year, they've done that, and we had the subordination agreement in the original bond issue, and we're requesting that you approve it in the current bond issue. Essentially, what they did is trade out the bond issue for, in effect, a mortgage. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Canard. Members of the Authority and the Agency, any questions on staff's report? There are two resolutions, one for the Authority and one for the Agency, what's your pleasure? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mills? I'll move both resolutions. Mr. Mills, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mr. Oden, any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Team 4-1, with Jeanie dissenting. We'll adjourn as the Housing Authority and the Community Redevelopment Agency, and convene as the city council, first order of business before the city council, is Item 2, resale restrictions and density bonuses. As pledged earlier, this will be separated for public comments. Based on the fact that I have a number of business relationships with many of the homeowners in the area, I am abstaining on this issue, do that conflict of interest, I'll be passing the gavel to Mr. Oden, our mayor pro tem, he has now the comment cards, and will handle the meeting at this point. Thank you, I'll step off chamber.
Yeah, seems you're going to do the next one, anyway. The first name that we have this evening is Shirley Bush. If you would please come forward, you will have three minutes. And welcome.
Hi, my name's Shirley Bush, I'm an owner at Sunrise Palms, I'm also a realtor. Sunrise Palms is a condo development with over 360 units, and it has a very active HOA. In our CCNRs, it states very, very clearly, the city can waive or modify any provision regarding the resale restriction in a manner that it does not result in an increased burden upon the owners, and continues to say such modification shall be for the benefit of, and not impose an increased burden upon the owners. Staff on June 11th said something about they can amend our CCNRs, they can't amend, they can modify or waive. June 11th study session, staff reported that over time, spotty compliance had created inequities in our neighboring properties. In the last five years, the current staff has not made an assertive move to clean up these spotty compliances. Sunrise Norte, the city owns the lease, the lease should have been extended six years ago, or in effort to sell the lots, to the low-income owners. Only 29 years left, the owners, if they try to refi or sell, they can only obtain a 20-year loan, and that costs that individual owner plus or minus $150 more between the 20-year loan and 30-year loan. Current restrictions have not only been neglected for the past six years, but for the last 20 years. What if current, or even a new staff, were to neglect this new program being recommended? Before long, the inequities in this new recommendation would be much, much greater. If the council votes to remove the restriction, you will leave almost 600 homeowners with a good feeling in their heart. If the council votes to work toward the staff's recommendation, you will have almost 600 homeowners with a very, very bitter taste. Please don't do that. Desert Dorado has shown their intense feelings toward removing this restriction, they only became involved in this really about 10 days ago. Last weekend, in 115-degree temperatures, they went from door to door with their neighbors and received 55% of the homeowners' signatures to remove this restriction. If the city were to send out one or two letters to the homeowners, they could not possibly compete with the homeowners going door to door. I still have all my contacts with the lenders on Quail Point, which I received 88% of the lenders' consent to remove this restriction. So, for now, to obtain their consent for Desert Dorado would be, wouldn't be very burdensome. 20 years ago, when the original sale started, there was only one documented low/moderate-income buyer. I found through the research that the city nor the developers documented or qualified any buyer if they were lower/moderate income, so if they were, it was totally by chance. Currently, from last week's meeting, I think there is a good number of the current owners of these developments that are low-income, moderate-income, seniors, fixed-income, people on total disability. So, they may not hit the city's inventory that they would like, city numbers, but they are. If the city is looking in the interest of the low-to-moderate-income person, then I'm sure you'll vote to remove this restriction. If the city is looking for numbers, and I'm hoping they're not, then maybe it'll go the other way. I really hope that you will make almost 600 homeowners happy tonight.
Thank you, and next we have Marsh Sauer, or Davy, followed by John Martin.
My name is David Sawyer, I'm a homeowner in Quail Point, and I've been retired about 15 years. And there's four points that I don't think have been covered by other comments I would like to make. One of them is that we own our home outright, and in our long-term planning, we are thinking of obtaining a reverse mortgage should one of us, my wife or I, need long-term housing care. We're concerned that any additional restriction on our title would hamper us from obtaining the highest mortgage which would be available at that time. Second, we are also concerned how any additional restriction and our cost would impact our estate and the ability to pass on the home to our children should we die before the 10-year limitation of the proposed assessment. Third, it's kind of a question, why should the residents of these three developments be deprived of the escalating price of homes surrounding us? As you know, there are some homes being built for about $350,000 in that area, at least that's the asking price. And with the increase in equity, the marketplace is the biggest or major investment of most families, which comprises the greatest asset that we all own. And lastly, we wish to participate in the free market, and would hope that the city would recognize the benefit of higher property valuation and the corresponding increase in sales tax, and that a more affluent resident brings to the city and all the surrounding businesses. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. John Martin, followed by Christine Baker. Is Christine here?
Okay, thank you.
You'll have three minutes, please give your name to the clerk.
Thank you, my name is John Martin, and I live at 1341 Luna Way. I was unable to make the meeting last week, but I was able to watch the telecast, and I want to thank all my neighbors who showed up and spoke, and I found that I have a lot more in common with them than I could have realized, and gotten to know quite a few of them this week as we discussed this issue. So, I want to add to their comments how this affects me personally. The house that I bought on Luna is my first time The house that I bought on Luna is my first home. I took advantage of some first-time homebuyer financing, which works if, after two or three years, the home has built enough equity to refinance, and I'm at that point now. But basically, I'm at 100% financing on a house that I don't know really what I could resell it for today. So it has certainly upset my American dream of owning my first home, and I hope that you'll find a solution to this that'll help people like me who don't have a lot of money. I probably would have qualified as a low-to-moderate-income buyer had the city asked, but as I recall, there was no application to see if I even qualified to buy a house by the city in that area. So now that I've bought at fair market value, and I'm finding this out, it just doesn't seem fair to tell me now that your plan has to just go out the window because the city's taking back, or you guys are trying to pick up a ball that was dropped 20 years ago and make good on it. And while I admire that, I don't quite see how you can legally, and in all fairness, I don't see how you can do it, because a lot of people like me bought their homes at fair market value with the intention that they would be able to resell it someday, or refinance it, as in my case, at fair market value. So not to be able to do that leaves me stuck in this home, and I'm suspended now. I don't know how that's going to work out. I've done a lot of work on the house since I owned it. I like that neighborhood, and, but at this point, I would certainly not do any further capital improvements. I would just leave the old roof. I wouldn't put in better windows and things that I had planned on doing when I refinanced this house if that expense can't come back to me someday as far as earned equity. And the other option, or the other point I wanted to make, is that I just don't see why the city would benefit from doing either of the two proposals that are offered. The original intent, as I understand it, was not to raise money for the city, but to make it possible for people of moderate and low incomes to own their homes, people like So now, the options require some kind of payment or penalty. If I had to sell my house and pay up to a $10,000 fee, I would feel like that was just a money grab from the city, plain and simple, on somebody who really deserves to live there. Thank you.
Christine Baker, followed by Britten Stubber.
Good evening. My name's Christine Baker. I am also a homeowner in the Quail Point development, and I am opposed, as well as the other 80% of the homeowners in my development, regarding the current restrictions that are placed on our homes. They have not been enforced over any continuity over the last 20 years. They were not disclosed, CCNRs were not provided. We are totally at a loss how all of this came about. I am also opposed to replacing any restrictions with the new ones. I really feel that's just going to complicate the issue for the homeowners down the road. I also want to bring up an analogy that I was advised of, that a council staff member made, that this situation is like parking a car in a red zone. Some people get a ticket, and some people do not. My response to that is, we parked our cars in a white zone, only to come out to find the curb painted red and a ticket placed on our car.[815.82][815.82](APPLAUSE). That is wrong, and this is wrong. I urge all the council members to vote on this matter using ethical and responsible judgment, clearly understanding the legal issues at hand to all the parties, and to rescind the restrictions, and to come to a reasonable conclusion that the homeowners stand united in this issue. Thank you.
Britten Stubber, followed by James Adams.
Hi, good evening. I'm Britten Stubber from 2580 North Aurora Drive in the Desert Dorado Development. Three weeks ago, I began to organize my neighborhood of Desert Dorado to respond to the city council's request to review 20-year-old home resale restrictions and a possible, what I hear now, is $3,000 fee to allow homeowners to opt out of these mostly neglected restrictions. This fee would not be paid by the developer, who greatly benefited from these density bonus programs 20 years ago, and not paid by those persons who have bought and sold these homes in the past at fair market value over and over again, but by current owners only. After we pay the opt-out fee, supposedly, we would then be able to sell our homes at fair market value. First of all, none of our homes or owners received any public money from the Palm Springs Housing Fund. Only the developer benefited by being able to sell more homes. Secondly, presently, none of us will be able to get fair market value equity on our homes, even if we opt out. Why? Because our neighborhood is now under a cloud of bad press, confusion, uncertainty, and controversy that will affect our values for a very long time. We now have what I call bruised-eye home value that will take a long time to heal. This affects our mortgages, home equity loans, reverse mortgages, and home sales. I personally have met with the majority of the homeowners in Desert Dorado, many who are here tonight. I have discussed with them their personal stories and situations, elderly ready to retire or enter nursing homes, single parents needing kids' college money, disabled or ill needing equity for care, and of course, those of us who are just counting on using their home's equity to just get ahead in life, like all of you. The intent of these homes, I believe, was to help low- and moderate-income people get ahead. These were not HUD housing projects. There were no public funds. Home equity is what low- and moderate-income persons use to get ahead. Resale restrictions and any proposed opt-out fees, although only in the thousands of dollars, could be 5% to 20% of many homeowners' equity, not the sale price, but equity. That's a lot for us. Think of taking 5% to 20% of your net worth and giving it to Palm Springs. Your purpose should be to help low- and moderate-income persons get ahead. I have spoken with most of these people, and most are low- and moderate-income, not home investors as perceived by the press and council and staff. Allowing our fair equity to build is a way to help these people get ahead, like all of you are. I have met with many of you here in city government and your good people. I challenge you to come up with a new housing policy that encourages developers to build more moderate-income housing, so more citizens of moderate means can get ahead. Be creative. But this 20-year-old housing experiment failed. Lead the city with new ideas, not old ones. Allow these hard-working people to get ahead.[1041.63][1041.63](APPLAUSE).
James Adams, followed by Steve Forcinius.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. I'm looking at this map behind you, and I see that the majority of the properties we're talking about don't exist up here. Quail Point's not on there. The new floor of Vista's not there. All of the improvements that have been made in our neighborhood, Desert Dorado's on there, Sunrise Palms are on there, Coyote Run's not on there, the new one at the end of Caballeros isn't on there. All the improvements that have been made in this town are now reflected underneath the sign that you guys set underneath. Now, I want you to understand that. When I bought my house, those didn't exist either. But as the neighborhoods improved, and I've improved my home, the neighborhood's been built up. Let's reflect our town in our city council. I'm sure that you're all aware that social security for baby boomers has been played with. Our 401Ks have been taken away by phantoms from Wall Street to NASDAQ, and now our hometown wants to reach in our pockets and take away what we have left. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. I don't think that you want to do this to us. I don't think that you want to do this to the homeowners that earn their living here, spend their tax dollars here, pay their taxes that come back to you through the federal and the state, county, city. You don't want to do this to us. I'm pretty sure that Karl Marx would smile down on any elected official that would vote to restrict, a restriction on this, on private property. I'm sure he would. I walked in under a sign that said, "The city is the people." Let's make sure it stays, "The city is the people," not the People's Republic of Palm Springs.[1173.08][1173.08](APPLAUSE).
Steve Forcinius, a resident of Desert Dorado. And like other residents, when I purchased, I was also not given any information regarding the restriction on resale. And currently, I'm extremely concerned about the refinance that I have now going on, and it was enough confusion, it being Indian land now, to also have this enter into it as well.[1208.54][1208.54](LAUGHTER). And if my refinance is not approved, I stand to lose over $100,000 in interest over the term of my mortgage. And so I believe any action other than rescinding this archaic covenant is cruel and unjust. I would also like to present, on behalf of one of my neighbors who was not able to attend, a short letter. It says, "Dear Mayor and council members, this is from Alexandra Dwyer. As a not-so-spry 80-year-old who lived through the Depression and served in World War II, I felt it would be wise to plan for future emergencies by investing in a home. Now I learn there are resale restrictions which were never explained to me. They were not enforced for many years. There is no question that applying them now is grossly unfair. I had peace of mind for more than 13 years. Please rethink your discriminatory plan. Sincerely, Alexandra Dwyer." Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Baker, followed by Cherie Dillon.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Elizabeth Baker, and welcome back, Ms. Hodges. Obviously, we believe that it is manifestly unfair to penalize us by putting different or new restrictions on these properties. And if you look at it from that standpoint of a group of properties that were never enforced with restrictions, and people who bought at fair market value, and are now being threatened by the proposal that we pay extra money to opt out of something that we never opted into. You have two different proposals tonight. One is to rescind, and we who live in the Desert Dorado tract understand that, even if you vote to rescind, that we will still be required to go out and get the majority, a 75% majority of the mortgage holders of our properties to agree, and we are willing to do that, and we will do that. We have already gotten 55% of our residents over a weekend when it was pretty warm out there. And we ask you only to look at this from the fairness standpoint, and last but not least, don't leave the Desert, yeah, Sunrise Norte property, don't leave them flapping in the breeze with a 29-year lease where they can't refinance at today's rates. We can do that if you rescind this, and then you should go take a good look at Sunrise Norte.
Cherie Dillon, followed by Dennis Sanders.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cherie Dillon, and I live on Aurora Drive in Desert Dorado Homes. While speaking with several of my neighbors throughout the past warm weekend, I've come to learn that while some homeowners in Desert Dorado do not recall any restrictions of CCNRs, some have some question about it, and when they questioned it, were told by Realtors who said they went to the city, and they said, "Don't worry about it. It's an antiquated law that hasn't been enforced for 20 years, and they're not going to do it now." Well, here we are. Bottom line is, there doesn't seem to be any consistency. The city seems to have exercised selective enforcement when dealing with Desert Dorado homeowners. Why the discrimination? What's the basis of it? I realize those of you who are left here with the task of voting on this issue, you're faced with unlawful actions of past members of council, who have not been consistent and fair in their enforcement of these restrictions. I really do sympathize with you. Don't shoot the messenger, as they say. You're in a way in the same situation as we are. You are left with a problem that others have created. Desert Dorado homeowners understand that. We also are left with a problem that others have created. Some of us were misled in order for someone, somewhere, to profit on the sale of a home. Please do it as right, and please do it as fair. Stop the practice of selective enforcement and release the restrictions from our homes. Let's wipe the slate clean and start over without the restrictions. Thank you.[1499.33][1499.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. That's Dennis Sanders, followed by Richard Pontius.
Good evening. Give your name, you all have three minutes. Good evening, thank you. My name is Dennis Sanders, and I live at 1433 East Gem Circle in Quail Point. I just recently purchased my home, as of May 2, 2003. This morning, I read the newspaper, and this is the first time I heard about the restriction on resale. So it really upset me, because had I known this when I was purchasing my home, I would have purchased a different home. I mean, I couldn't believe it when I read this this morning. I even called my Realtor and have not gotten a call back yet.[1548.01][1548.01](LAUGHTER). So I stand with all the other homeowners, because I'm a heart patient, I'm on disability. I moved here from Mission Viejo, and I put all my equity into my home, and I'm in the process of putting in a pool, and I'm like, "Why am I doing all this if there's a big problem like this?" And it was really upsetting that, like I said earlier, I did not find out until I read the paper this morning, and I just bought my home. Escrow closed May 2, 2003, and I moved in May 3. So I was really kind of upset. So I hope the council, I stand with all the other homeowners, and I'm real new to this area, but I hope the restriction is lifted. That's all I have to say.[1596.71][1596.71](APPLAUSE).
Richard Pontius, followed by Clint Holland.
Good evening. My name is Richard Pontius, I'm from Quail Point. I've spoken to you many times. I will not repeat myself or repeat any of the comments people made tonight, just to reiterate the fact that when Shirley and I started this project, (LAUGHTER), big project now, we went door to door, got the signatures, we got 80% of the people agreeing to it. We came, met with the city staff. February 3, we were instructed to proceed as required in the CCNRs to get the lender's approval. We did that. Then we continued trying to meet with the city and turn in our results. As you all know, that didn't happen for quite some time, and not even till after the June 11 meeting, when we were hit from the side from an oncoming car, which happened to be the city of Palm Springs, with a whole 'nother proposal than what we had proposed. You know, no contact to let us know that, you know, the city staff felt there was another alternative that they wanted to present for council. As most of you know, I worked for a city. I understand staff needs to present other alternatives. I understand that. But I was very disappointed that we were not involved in that process. As you've heard at countless meetings, particularly the last one and tonight, people did not know about this restriction. And whether they should have or not is, can be debated, but this many people not knowing, even though I did know, but again, I was told by my Realtor, which I would never use again, that not to worry about it because the city didn't enforce it. I also point out the fact that this has been going on for 20 years. This isn't anything new. People have been selling homes in there, Quail Point, the other subdivisions, and not going through the city, and that's what the Realtors believe. The city has been aware this has been a problem, not with the first of this year when we started this project to rescind the ordinance, the CCNR restrictions, but they've been aware for many, many years. They could have taken action a long time ago. They could have presented to council some resolutions or some problem, and created a way that it was noted at the time of the sale that there was a resale restriction, not just their CCNRs on this property, but there is a resale restriction. So people would be totally aware. They could have sent letters to the title companies. They could have sent letters to the property owners after they bought it, just so they know then, and then they can go back to the previous owner, Realtor, or whoever, and take whatever action. None of that was done. So I think the only fair thing to do is rescind this CCNR restriction.
Thank you very much.[1792.11][1792.11](APPLAUSE). That's Clint Holland, followed by Tim Overdorf.
Good evening, council members. My name is Clint Holland, I'm a Quail Point homeowner, and I've had a lot to say in past sessions, so I'd like to read a letter from another Quail Point homeowner who wasn't able to attend tonight, if I may. Greetings. I own a home at 1491 East Padua Way in Palm Springs. I'm affected by the vote that will partake July 23, 2003, Wednesday evening, and regrettably, I'm out of town on business and cannot attend. The point I would like to make is that the restrictions have no bearing on the city whatsoever. The point I would like to make is that the restrictions have no bearing on what the city was intending to accomplish 20 years ago. They currently have no bearing. Therefore, the current restrictions only aggravate and injure those who are trying to refinance or sell their homes. The proposed study session, presentation, recommendation hurts everyone. The recommendation will likely make Quail Point one of the most undesirable places to live in Palm Springs. I cannot foresee any reputable banking institution that would provide a loan at a competitive rate to any new buyer in the area or for any new home improvements. I strongly request that you vote no on the recommendation and yes to remove the restrictions by amendment requested by the Quail Point community and authorized by the CCNRs. Remember, I was encouraged by the city to obtain my lender's written consent as so stated in the CCNRs, and I did. My lender, Bank of America, was very pleased to have it removed. Now it appears as though the city wants to add an increased burden and penalty for living at Quail Point. I ask, please remove this restriction now. That's sincerely Fernando Diaz. As I've stated before, the restrictions are hardship on the owners and their hardship on the cities. They benefit neither. The model no longer works, and the owners have spoken. The city will not be able to get the required number of signatures to approve any additional recommendations. So I trust that the city council will do the just and fair thing tonight, this evening, and vote to rescind the resale restrictions. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Overdurf, and I'm a resident of Dorado at 1390 East Adobe Way. And this evening, I'm reading a letter from Mr. Stephen Vickery, who is unable to be here because he is traveling. Honorable members of the Palm Springs City Council, I am writing this letter as I will be traveling on July 23, 2003, when this matter is on the council agenda. Therefore, I request you allow one of my neighbors to read my comments into the record. Mr. Vickery then writes, On Sunday, July 13, 2003, Britt Stubber, a fellow Desert Dorado resident, introduced me to what has become the shock of my seven years as a year-round resident of Palm Springs. Britt explained to me that the city of Palm Springs was proposing to enforce provisions of CCNR, which would limit the price at which I might be able to sell my residence, and that the city was proposing a modification of the restriction as it was originally stated in the CCNR. This was the first inkling of any such restriction I have received since purchasing the home approximately 30 months ago. I paid fair market value for my home when I purchased it. Since then, I have put approximately $20,000 into improvements. Now, after making this sizable investment, I am told the free enterprise system upon which our country is founded does not work, or at least is severely restricted in my neighborhood. I made my initial response to this travesty known to the council and my neighbors at the council session on July 16, 2003. This was prior to my review of Elizabeth Baker's summary analysis of the legal basis for the city's claim of authority over this matter. After reviewing her summary, I have referred this matter to my attorney for further study. However, as a layperson, I believe Ms. Baker has made a pretty compelling case for the fact that any authority originally granted in the CCNR ceased to exist quite some time ago as a matter of law. I will not agree to any modifications unfavorable to property owners. I expect that you will make the right decision, but am prepared to engage in any legal action necessary to protect my property rights. The potential for a representative action should be enough to send shivers down the spine of every realtor, title company, escrow agent, and mortgage lender in Palm Springs. The cost of such actions will be at your feet. Thank you.
The last card that I have is Sandy Cunningham Haley. And if there's anyone else who would like to speak, please come down to the microphone following Ms. Haley.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of council, staff. I am Sandy Cunningham Haley. I reside at 2516 North Aurora Drive in the Desert Dorado community. I want to take a moment and thank Britt Stubber for galvanizing our community. I'm employed by the Palm Springs Unified School District as a substitute teacher. Each day, I make a conscious effort to teach the students concepts that are not addressed in the three Rs. We spend lots of time on the idea that every person makes a choice to do right or to do wrong. We talk about how difficult it is to make tough decisions. We talk about consequences. We talk about trust. We talk about integrity. Everyone sitting in this audience tonight knows that you are presented with one of those tough decisions. Yet you sit on the council not solely because you have a worthy background, but also because the voters feel that you have the integrity and wisdom to make those tough decisions which impact our lives. Over the past several weeks, you have been presented with verbal and written opinions stating that the restrictions are unjust. You didn't create this situation, and prior administrations didn't enforce the restrictions. Why should you? Now is the time to legally rid yourself of this burden. Tonight, I ask that you validate our faith in you. Let your honor, integrity, and wisdom guide you to render a decision to rescind the restrictions. Tonight, you have the unique opportunity to be compassionate. Make the right choice, do the right thing. Thank you.
Please come forward, give your name to the clerk. You all have three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Bob Hill, and I'm a resident in Quail Point. And if you'll permit me, I have a letter from Mr. Bill Cockins, who couldn't make it because he's out of town tonight. And it reads as follows. In 1984, I purchased the home in Sunrise Norte with a CHAP loan. It was shared equity loan with the state of California with the interest rate of 13.25%. Several years later, the interest rates fell, and I was able to refinance the house and buy the state out. Earlier this year, I paid off the loan on the house. In some ways, one might think this is a success story of a person of a lower moderate income becoming a homeowner. The truth, however, is quite the opposite. In 1995, I moved from the house and found that the value of the home had decreased to the point where selling it was just not an option. Consequently, I have been renting it for the last seven or eight years at a cash flow loss. When I purchased the home in 84, the neighborhood was neat, and there was an active homeowners' association, and it made a great effort to enforce the landscaping requirements by the CCNRs. Today, the tract is in danger of becoming a slum, houses are in need of repair, and many yards are unkept. Home values have not kept pace with the rest of the market, largely because of declining years remaining on the land leases. Who would want to buy a house with the specter of losing it in less than 30 years? I understand that the city is considering increasing the leases to 61 years and bringing the lease payments up to market value over a period of 10 years. Alternatively, the city is considering selling the lots to homeowners. Clearly, the only permanent fix is the alternative of selling the lots to the homeowners. Does the city really want to be in the land leasing business for the next 60 years? Leasing is less likely to rejuvenate the neighborhood. If the city had solved this problem six years ago, when banks would no longer fund the 30-year mortgage, the value of the land would clearly have been less than it is today. It is only fair that the appraised values of the lots be adjusted to their 1996-97 values, where the problem should have been solved when determining the selling price at market value. I only found out about this issue before the city council 10 days ago. I'm sure there are other homeowners in Sunrise Norte who have been similar comments relevant to your pending decisions, and I ask that you delay any action until they have a chance to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward, give your name to the clerk. You all have three minutes.
My name is Jerry Salb. I'm one of those people in Sunrise Norte he's referring to, 3291 Sand Spring. We bought our house in December. And you know, it's sort of ironic, because I'm from Indianapolis, I have a house here as well, and this really represented a dream for me, meaning that one of my life's goals was to move to Palm Springs and have a house here. And I'm a very proud homeowner along with my partner Kurt, to be here in Palm Springs. And I can't tell you what a thrill it has been to, first of all, to achieve a goal of a lifetime, and secondly, to live here in Palm Springs at long last. Having said that, however, I must say that I was nothing short of astonished, if not shocked, to learn about all this, namely, first of all, how I learned about it. I learned about it secondhand through Shirley over here, only because I came down to the city. Because when we bought this house in December, we came to the city. I knew all about CCNRs. I read the CCNRs word by word, page by page. I came down to the city. I checked with the city very carefully to find out, are these enforceable? Are you using them? What's the story here? I was told, forget about them. I was told, by city personnel, they're not enforceable here. They're in other sections, but not yours, because yours is a city-owned leased land, we were told. We obtained title insurance for this property. The only exception in title insurance was we had to be owner-occupied for two years, could not rent it. That was the only exception. We've got a perfectly valid title policy, but I guarantee you, they're going to come after you guys, you know, if you try to do what you're trying to do here, which, I quote, you're referring to one of our transactions, "Six parcels have been improperly conveyed to homeowners through prior transactions." I assume you're referring to my dream home. And it says, quote, "The city needs to get them back." You're not taking my house back. No way. I worked too hard for that. And we're going to keep it, because we're proud to live here, we want to continue to live here, and I think the solution here is very simple, quite frankly, as it relates to us, as well as to all these other people. In fact, the solution is so obvious that I think probably most of you may have seen yourselves. You know, Albert Einstein, I think, once said that when faced with even the most complicated problems, he found that invariably, the correct solution was the simplest one. In this case, the solution for us is painfully obvious. Sell us the land and get out of the leasing business. And as for the rest of the homeowners here, the solution is equally obvious. Rescind the CCNRs, because then there's not a problem. If you don't rescind the CCNRs, you know there's going to be a lawsuit. You know there's going to be a class action lawsuit. There's lawyers dying to get involved. I've already gotten calls from attorneys who want to form class action, you know, little groups to come after you guys. You know it's going to be a multimillion-dollar lawyers, and I'm an attorney myself, a lawyer's feed day, you know, to feed off the city for years and years and years. Take the way that makes common sense requires, which in my opinion is rescind the CCNRs, and in our case, to sell us the land. Or make a fourth sale upon sale of the real estate. That's all there is good.
Good evening, and welcome. Please give your name to the clerk. You all have three minutes.
My name is Judith St. Michael. I'm a resident of the Desert Dorado. I guess none of you want to be re-elected. The resolution... This resolution is unfair, and it must be rescinded, not lessened, rescinded totally. First, you've never told us what is so important that the city must have this money. I'm sure it can't be to abide by an archaic resolution that's been ignored for 20 years. Is this going on in other communities? Are you forcing us into poverty to make this neighborhood low income? You never told us what you would do with the money that you want to take from us. I wonder if this upsurge in market value never happened, if you would be so ready to do this. And I think that you'd rather hurt your own citizens than for your own financial gain. I live on Indian land, and I'm not sure if this is even legal with the land owned by the sovereign nation. You never told us why you insist on ignoring your constituents. You have witnessed numerous meetings and countless responses from all the people in the neighborhoods in question. They all have the same issues to address. Can't you hear us? Or are you that cold and heartless that you really don't care about your full-time citizens? And since when does the staff members control our financial future? I understand they back up the housing department, but do any of you live in these areas? Would you want $10,000 taken away from your income and equity on your homes? Are we just the first in a long line of uncovered CCNRs to scrutinize? In this city's, is this the city's new income? How much money could you make if you did this to all the neighborhoods? I might have opened Pandora's Box in the city. Are you planning on sneaking in CCNRs on new developments? Is this your new plan to deal with the budget crisis? I used to not be too interested in politics, the reason being that the candidates would make false promises for we, the people, and once elected, they would do what they damn well pleased. You were elected by we, the people, to represent we, the people, and you're not representing we, the people, nor helping us. Living here the past 10 years, I decided to become an active citizen and be more interested in my city and local government. But I can't stand silent when I see Nazi Germany on my doorstep. You need to rescind the entire resolution for we, the people. A quote from Merriam-Webster, communism, a theory advocating elimination of private property, be a totalitarian system of government in which a single authoritarian party is in control. We, the people, are together in this situation.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Judith St. Michael.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue? Then we will...
My name is Candy Palmer. I live at 2632 Aurora Drive. I didn't bring this up last Wednesday because I didn't get an answer from somewhere, but prior to the meeting last Wednesday, I kept hearing about this CCR. And I thought, oh, good, that sounds so good. Everyone's talking about it, and I wanted one. So I called Time Warner Cable. And I said that, you know, I want to get this CCR. I have HBO, and I have Disney Channel and stuff like that. And so, give me the CCR. So Monday, I finally got an answer. This was after Wednesday's, and they enrolled me in Comedy Station, Children's Station, and Reality Station. Well, naturally, Monday afternoon, I called right back, and I canceled those, because I knew now what CCR meant. And the other thing was that people that were here last week, they heard about me watering in the wind, and they realized I'd been watering their lawns when it got windy, and they've been leaving cookers on my doorstep. I don't mind the cookers, but if they leave any more, can they be sugar-free? A little diabetic. And then we didn't mention last week, but I think if you have a show of hands here, nearly everyone in our area has had new roofs put on their house. I've had it done twice, recently, the beginning of this year, and it cost me $3,500. And to have this other thing come up, you know, I'm charging like crazy on the charge accounts that I have. That's it. I'll go along with anything that's been said now, except one more word. If you see the mayor again tonight, compliment him on that nice shirt he's wearing.
We will close our public comments at this time, and we will move to our staff report.
to separate out Sunrise Palms, give the report on Sunrise Palms, take the vote, and then when we get to your conflict, we will ask you to leave the room, and so we'll do them separately. So with that, I'd ask Mr. Raymond to give the report, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
That would include Sunrise...
Well, we could do Quail Point, because the mayor's...
Right.
The mayor's gone for all three, so we'll do Sunrise Palms and Quail Point.
And then we'll...
We didn't know this morning if he was conflicted on all three, or just Quail Point.
And I have a conflict on Desert Dorado due to proximity to my home.
To your home. I have the good fortune to follow Mr. Palmer, kind of a hard act to follow. Members of the council, we came before you in June to discuss this issue at a study session. And I'm just going to recap real quickly, the staff report's rather long, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but just kind of how we got to this point here tonight. The city did adopt in 1980 a covenant control mechanism, which is a density program for subdivisions, subdivision developers seeking density bonuses. Really, it was for 120 acres up in the area where these subdivisions are, north of Racquet Club, that was originally, had a general plan designation of airport noise and blow sand. And it was re-designated and a zoning change to allow what they call density-controlled residential. The state requires that if a developer comes forward and requests a density bonus from the city, that you grant the density bonus. In return for that, typically, and we do this on apartment projects, multifamily projects, especially affordable projects, all the time, and it's just kind of factored in, and normally we put money in, and we restrict, our restrictions under the redevelopment agency are much more stringent. But as part of the state law, the state requires that then the city get a minimum of 20% of the units restricted for persons, and made available at a price affordable to persons of lower moderate income. What it appears, and I wasn't here in 1980, and none of us were here in 1980, but what it appears the city attempted to do in creating this program was to create a program that didn't single out 20% of the units and said, you, 20% of the units, have a restriction that says, you can only sell to somebody that's lower moderate income, and that's it. But the other 80% have a right to sell to whoever they want. What it looks like, and I don't agree with how the program was designed, and we talked about that in June, what it looks like, the theory was, is that if we can control the price of the homes and sort of keep it in line with where moderate income levels were at the time, that, you know, going forward forever, that the homes would always be affordable to moderate income, and that, I think, in the staff report, it even says that at any given time, 20% of the families there would be moderate income. It was sort of backing in, and I agree, a lot of the folks that got up tonight and last week talked about, you know, the developer getting the benefit. Well, the developer got the benefit, but also, the intent behind it was then to pass on a benefit through lower sales price, because if you remember back to 1980, the housing market, when they created this program, 18%, 20% interest rates, housing prices very high. It was an attempt to try to keep the price down and make it affordable to a segment of the community that even then was being priced out of the community. On the enforcement, the enforcement has been spotty, and the reason is, is that it is, it's, and we do, Dave and I, we've talked to the folks that we've met with, my department processes three or four of these a week, or not a week, a month, about one a week. We get them in, we do the calculation, we do the consent letter, and all that. So there are, and we have two file drawers full of files on, you know, Desert Dorados, Sunrise Palms, actually, I think it's three file drawers, Quail Point, Sunrise Norte. So we have files, but you know, sometimes you go to the file, there's nothing in it, because that house has never come through the process. So we admit to that. The reason is, when the program was created, there was not a separate regulatory agreement, or there was not a separate agreement that said, here is an agreement called city resale restriction. It was placed in the CCRs, Section 8 in one, Section 10 in the other, it's three or four pages of sections in the CCRs. And then what happens is that when the person buys a house, and they get the, the broker gets a preliminary title report, or the buyer gets a preliminary title report, all it says is that the house is subject to the terms and conditions contained in the CCRs, the covenants, codes, and restrictions. It doesn't say, and oh, by the way, that includes a resale restriction on the part of the city. So there are lots of people involved in a sales transaction. There's a buyer's agent, there's a seller's agent, there's an escrow company, there's a title company, there's a seller. If everyone is getting up and saying, I wasn't told, there are a lot of parties to that, and we rely on that. The city relies on that mechanism for all sorts of restrictions. We do it for utility underground and covenants, we do it for right-of-way dedication, we do it for all sorts of things. Things are recorded against property, and you call those later at some point when it's necessary. And we do it, you know, on utilities, and we do it on all sorts of things. So that is a normal mechanism that cities use to enforce restrictions on property. It's not archaic, it's normal. Now, the fact is that when you have 577 individual properties, and on Desert Dorado and on Quail Point, where they're not gated subdivisions, there's not an HOA, Sunrise Norte doesn't have an HOA anymore either, that there's not the normal enforcement, it's understandable that somebody would look and say that the CCRs are on the title, but, you know, I read them, nobody gave me a copy, that sort of thing. I fully understand that. So that's kind of how the program was set up. The original program was set up, and that's how it's operated for the last 20 years in some cases, 14 years in other cases, subdivisions of different ages. When we came to you in June, we had a couple of concerns. One, you know, I originally got into this and was pushing it along in order to come to you and actually recommend that you rescind these. But when we worked through some of the issues in April, May, and there were issues with the housing element, there's issues with, there's some other things that the, when you go back to the original intent of the program to provide moderate income. So what we wanted to do is, in essence, get everybody out of this, but get everybody out of it in a way that, if you want to call it a soft landing instead of a hard rescission. So we came to you in June with the recommendation for an amended set of restrictions, and not just a rescission. And we wanted to do four things. One was to clear up the confusion that everybody says they have about whether or not that things are restricted, and we would create, we, you know, get rid of the old restriction in the CCRs, create a new restriction that goes right on the title, so that the title officer and the escrow officer, I mean, it's revealed right there in the, right there in the title report as a restriction on resale. That's number one. Second was that if the original legislative intent of creating the program was to create moderate income housing, somebody got up here tonight and said, you know, nobody ever tried to test whether I was moderate, or, you know, whether people were moderate. Well, you know what? That wasn't written in the program. It was, we got to it in a roundabout way by trying to restrict the resale price, but it wasn't, it's not a provision in the original program that says you have to be moderate income. So that was the second thing, is that we would make it a moderate income program. The third is that we wanted to provide an opportunity for the restriction to go away altogether, with an early buyout provision, as well as a termination of the restriction upon sale to an over-moderate income buyer and in compliance with the remedy. When you say to people, well, we want to restrict the house to be moderate income housing, then people say, well, geez, that limits who I can sell it to. So we wanted to create a mechanism that said, no, you can sell it. If somebody is qualified as moderate, the fourth thing was that we put the restriction that it would sunset in 10 years anyway. Right now, the CCRs are 50 years, they're 60 years, you know, they've got, in some cases, 40 more years to run on them. The restrictions have 40 more years. So we said, you know, in 10 years, if nobody else does anything, nobody does anything else, they'd go away anyway. But, so we wanted to give an opportunity upon resale to somebody over-moderate, that you could sell it to whoever you want, you sell it to, you know, Donald Trump if you want, he could buy it, and with the remedy, and I can describe the remedy, but the, which was the buyout provision, then the sale goes forward and the restriction goes away at that point. The restriction would get terminated. So the purpose in recommending the replacement rather than rescinding them was, again, because of the legislative purpose, you know, they were part of, created a part of a density bonus program, and I think we described that the legal requirement on a density bonus under state law is that 20% of the units remain affordable, but in this case, the city did try to create a mechanism that sort of got us to 20%, but in a very, very roundabout way. So we wanted to, you know, just directly hit that head-on. Now, the council, you could decide to remove all the resale restrictions. We're talking, again, right now, only about Quail Point and Sunrise Palms, we'll talk about Desert Dorado in a few minutes. Or you could decide to replace the restriction with the recommended one, that staff feels is clear and fair, and that would contain an opt-out provision. If you do vote to rescind the provision on Quail Point, the work is already done from the homeowners' end on at least getting the required number of signatures. We would have to work with the title company as to what exactly the form would be that we record against the property that would make it all go away. But the title companies, I know, I just got a fax today that has given us some direction on what that would be. In the case of Sunrise Palms, if you voted to rescind, you would not have to go back and get signatures, because I think Shirley, in the first speaker, got up and said, there's an amendment to those CCRs that says that the city can, I use the word amend, she uses modify, but change the restrictions, provided they don't create an increased burden. We think rescinding them wouldn't, certainly would not create an increased burden. So you can do that probably by just recording the resolution against the title. If you do vote to alter or amend the restriction, and if you want, I can go through what the, you know, more specifics on what they are, we would have to undertake a process to seek the required number of signatures from both the homeowners and the lenders to effect the change. The staff would have to do that. And if they don't, if the owners and lenders don't agree to such a change, then the current restrictions obviously would stay in place. And then on the issue of Sunrise Norte, we are appraising those lots right now, and we'll be back to you probably the first or second meeting in September with a recommendation on the lease, and there's some decisions that, policy decisions that we need to make on that. And now, so you asked what the recommendation is. You have, we're talking about two subdivisions, so you have four resolutions in front of you. The resolution for Sunrise Palms to accept the amended restrictions and to, you know, direct staff to seek to get the consent of the, well, because in Sunrise Palms, where you can amend without the signatures, provided you're not creating an additional burden or an increased burden, I think staff would recommend that if you did vote to amend the restriction or adopt the new restrictions, that we would undertake to try to get the votes, and not try to do it by, you know, using that provision. Because there's some argument, I've argued that the new restrictions are less of a burden than the old restrictions, but others don't, the residents certainly don't feel that way. So we would have to go through the same process of getting the signatures. And then if you, the other resolution is to rescind the restrictions on each of those two subdivisions. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to walk you through what the actual provisions are, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Alshar?
If I could just add one point to John's report, I think council should be aware that even if these restrictions were to be rescinded, we do need a discussion at some point in time about future density bonus projects, what sorts of restrictions should we put on those projects. Staff has developed an alternative to the system we've been using. The residents that we've talked with don't think that the alternative is, they certainly don't think the alternative is a good alternative in their case, and we talked a little bit about what some other ideas might be to try and deal with those options. You don't necessarily have to talk about that tonight, but I just want to make everybody aware that we certainly don't want to continue down the road as projects come in for density bonuses, which under state law, they are authorized to do. Ultimately, we're going to need some dialogue, maybe a study session or something like that, to come up with what sort of alternative approach the council wants to use in the future. And I also think that potentially, we should have some sort of a density bonus type of ordinance that lays this out, and we get it municipal code, and really set it in stone instead of doing it on an ad hoc basis as individual projects come along. Again, you don't necessarily have to resolve that tonight, but I think the council needs to be thinking about that.
Thank you. I think it would probably be best if we would plan that discussion specifically for another time, but council, if you have any questions of staff, any observations, comments that you'd like to make.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges.
Well, I wasn't here the night of the study session, but I certainly watched it on TV, and this is quite a nightmare. And it's a nightmare not only on your part, the homeowners, but on the city's part. It's really hard for me to understand how a city can, for 20 or 25 years, not know what the hell it's doing. It truly is amazing to me. At this particular point, I don't see that there's anything that we can do other than rescind the whole thing. These homeowners are not the ones who benefited from the density. That happened 25 years ago. And that should not be penalized now for what happened 25 years ago, and because the city could not get some type of a process in place that allowed for them to recoup the ability to give that density bonus. So at this particular point, as far as I'm concerned, there's nothing to do other than to rescind both Sunrise Palms and Quail Point, which is what we're talking about at this particular time, and move on so these folks can live in comfort and enjoy their homes and sell them for lots of money and reap the benefits.
Dana, I will second that motion.
Is that a motion?
I second.
That's a motion.
We're still taking comments. I was going to make a comment, but go ahead.
So the motion's second, and now it's discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, all right. And I know specifically, we're not talking about Desert Dorado at this time, but that was the first project. I was, I can't remember if I was on the planning commission or on architectural review at...
So, the motion's second, and now it's discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, all right. And I know specifically, we're not talking about Desert Dorado at this time, but that was the first project. I was, I can't remember if I was on the planning commission or an architectural review at that time when this project went through. And as Mr. Raymond mentioned, interest rates were 18%, 20%, in some cases even higher at that time. There was no housing being built. There was a need for some incentive, and the city at that time did what I felt was very different, very creative. Nothing like this has ever been done before. And it was pretty much an experiment at the time. And I can recall looking at what the proposal was, thinking, I don't know when, but at a point in time, it will be a problem because the enforcement issue of it, it was not there. It relied on CCNRs being read by the homeowners, which not all of us do. The realtors, the title companies picking this stuff up. And for the first sales, it was fine, but it's after that, it became a problem. The idea was a very good idea, not to encumber 20% and pick, you know, one out of every four houses or five houses around the neighborhood and say, well, you're encumbered, you're encumbered, you are. That would not have been the right thing to do. And I do agree with what was done at that time. This has turned into a mess. And it's turned into a mess not because of, I don't think anyone's intent or anybody's fault, because the system just failed. And I think Mr. Alshier's point that we need to come up with a density bonus ordinance so nothing like this ever happens again. And if we have a task force for it, Shirley will be on that task force. And the, but I think it did, it did give some incentives to Palm Springs Housing at the time, and I do think it worked well. It has been, over the years, it has been dealt with haphazardly. And I feel like, I think like all of you do, that the solution that needs to happen here is it needs to be fair and it needs to be equitable. And I cannot see in any way how you could take this situation and make it fair and equitable without rescinding. There's too many, too many, there's too much water under the bridge, there's too many people, there's too many sales, and it's just, it's an impossibility to make it fair. And I definitely feel it needs to be fair. So, I would personally like to thank Shirley and Richard and Britt and the group that we met with a couple of times. They were very easy to work with. They had all the facts, they were non-emotional, which seems to get things done faster. And I think they were very informative on my part, from my end, and I think Mr. Oden attended as well. And it helped me understand what the plight was and ask the correct questions of staff and to find out that we do not have a legal obligation, we do not have a legal problem in doing this, which is I'm certainly concerned from the city's standpoint. And so I will be voting along with Ms. Hodges and Mr. Oden.
I just want to say something, and that is that it's really good to see people come down and want to be involved in local government. And I want to say that this is one of those issues where you don't make everybody happy. And when you become involved in local politics or any politics, you realize that you have to make decisions that you feel are in the best interest of the city. It cannot be personal. And I find it offensive when someone gets up and threatens not to vote for me or anyone else because of an issue. And if that be my reason for voting with these people, then you don't want me. Not that I'm running again, but you wouldn't have wanted me. I have always tried to pride myself in making a decision that I felt was in the interest of the majority of the city of Palm Springs, not on a personal basis.
First of all, I would like to apologize to all of the people who are affected by these various issues that we are dealing with tonight. Because I think our process was flawed not once, but twice. I think in the initial program that was set up, and you know, there are a lot of things that happened 20 years ago that 10 years later, you know, if you're not there to revise and they continue, they're flawed. And the people here who are current staff were not here when this program was designed, and yet I think that they tried to address a situation that was already out of control. I guess my real concern is what happened after the residents came to the city. They came to the city and said, we want these restrictions lifted. What do we have to do? Plain and simple. We said, okay, you go and get these signatures and come back. They went and secured the signatures and they returned to us. And then we said, oh, well, you need to go to the next step. You also need to get these signatures from your lenders. They wouldn't get that step, thinking that I've done that, this is over. And instead, they were met with something different. It was with the proposal, and I'm not saying that we didn't need to do this proposal. Mr. Alshier, I agree with you 100% that at some point, we need to sit down and set a plan of how we plan to deal with these issues of density programs. But, the delay has created what we see here tonight. The delay has created an atmosphere where people don't have trust or confidence in their local leadership or in their city. And that's most unfortunate. It's gone on long enough where people come up to the microphone and they are concerned whether or not we're surreptitiously trying to do some things that are even illegal. There was no reason why this had to go on that long. We could have responded earlier. Because from the night of the study session, for me, I spoke to staff and said, after we talked together, and I had a chance to hear all sides there in that after meeting, there's no way that I can support this. I'm not sure about the direction that you received from other staff, and yet this thing went on and on and on with all of these meetings, with people continuing to get more information and going, getting more signatures, and we created havoc in our community for no reason. No reason. Hopefully, we see this process and we will conduct ourselves differently when something else comes up. And this is just so unfortunate that we've had to drag you through all of this and all this anxiety and threats of litigation when it's all, you can see where everybody is on this issue. There was nothing hidden. No one was waiting to try to take your property or to illegally assess you in some way. We were looking at options, yes. And it's just unfortunate the way the whole thing happens. We're sorry. Hopefully, we'll set up a process whereby this does not happen to our citizens again. Madam Clerk? Roll call.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. Ross Murchin?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
And I will be leaving at this time due to a conflict on the next issue.
And I will be taking over. This is on Desert Dorado. We'll wait for Mr. Oden to leave the room.
You want the whole staff report all over again?
I don't really think that's necessary.
I'll make the same motion if I could, and we'll just skip the rest of it.
Okay, the motion is seconded. Ms. Hodges?
Further discussion, please?
Oh, excuse me. Further discussion.
Just, I'd just like to follow up on what Mr. Oden said. And I agree to a point, although I don't think, as a councilperson, I would have gotten to where I was without the input that we had from staff, without the input we had from the citizens group. And as much as you may want to try to push things along, as a councilperson, I don't feel comfortable in voting on something from an emotional issue. I want to understand all the facts. I think staff did their job in getting us the facts. We had to analyze them. It was important to get citizen input. So, I mean, I don't feel like it was really pushed off. I thought, I mean, it could have been done faster, I agree, but I don't feel that there was any intention of time delay or that, anything along that line. Because I kept asking for information. I wanted information. And I think, as a councilperson, I owe it to everyone in this city to know what this vote is and know what I'm voting on and not necessarily make it an emotional vote. So, I do agree, obviously, all of us agree, but it's just, I think that the process we went through, I thought it worked fine. So, thank you.
And I learned a lot from public comment. Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Aye.
Why don't we take a 10-minute break?
Thank you.
...form of $5,000 grants to, again, the first 100, these persons being moderate-income persons. We were able to work out an arrangement that if less than 100 persons qualify, then larger grants would be available to try and get some additional persons qualified. So in both instances, both for the city and the park owner, the full amount of the $500,000 is available for the assistance. JR and I will be working on some criteria as to how the money will be dispersed, and we have other programs where we have developed criteria, and we will put those in a written form, and we do have experience with these types of programs, but we do want to be sure that the dispersment of this money has written standards. But that is not included in the settlement agreement. That will be something that we develop in terms of dispersing the money. The -- well, I suppose I should also say that the other positive aspect for the city in terms of settlement agreement is the developer does waive various claims and litigation possibilities against the city and will not pursue those. Hopefully, the -- as you know, it's been a very difficult situation. The city has, as was stated earlier, really stuck with the park and the residents of the park for a very, very long time. More than a decade that I've been here, we have been -- it seems like we've had some continuous litigation going on concerning this park. We feel under the current circumstances, this is the best arrangement that can be worked out, and we believe that we have gotten the park owner to step forward with the agreement that conceptually we thought we were going to get several meetings ago when you approved the final subdivision map. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions concerning the terms of the settlement.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Alshire. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I will not be supporting this, this minute order, as I stated the last time this came up. We've been dealing with this particular property owner for a long time, and every step of the way, I've just not seen anything that makes me think that he's going to deal fairly. Now, when we looked at this issue initially, and we were concerned whether or not it was a sham. Now, it is true that the courts, they really haven't identified specifically what qualifies a sham, but we paid an additional $25,000 for an appraisal, and the appraisal showed us that there was a distinct difference between the appraisal from the homeowners and where the park owner was, and it was significant. It was significant enough for us, I believe, to say that it was a sham. Now, I know that we're looking to try to make some sort of settlement and to move on, and that's okay. I'm comfortable with making an agreement and moving on, but I'm not comfortable saying that this is not a sham, because it is what it is. It's a sham. This man came, I mean, they came here a few weeks ago and said, "Okay, we'll say, we'll give money to the first 100 people." And just like that, he changes that and said, "Well, we'll give it to the first 100 low-income." Every time we make a deal with this person, it changes the next day. So if I could say in confidence that I thought we were dealing in good faith with someone, it might be different, but I don't see where that has happened, and I'm not in support of using home funds for this subsidy, because in reality, if it weren't for this settlement, we would not even think about using our home funds, $500,000, for this project. We wouldn't. So for us to take these monies that are designated for low-income and moderate housing and use it for this particular project, I think, is not in the best interest of the city. So I will not be supporting it.
Other counsel comments?
During public comments, Carolyn indicated she did not like the closing date on the low-income residences.
Is this a change?
What is the date? Are we aware of what date she is more comfortable with, or why that March 1, 2004, date is unacceptable? What do we know at this time? I'm looking at page 6A4 on the bottom, but I don't know what date we're trying to reference it to.
You know, as you know, Bill Winder was specifically involved in the negotiations. I know there was some discussion about that, because the developer wanted the closing date to be fairly quick. There, on our, from our part, there was concern to try and provide a longer period of time, and this ended on being the time period they were able to agree with. And I'm not, I have not talked about what the alternative date is that the park tenants would feel more comfortable with.
Because this indicates that the low-income resident shall close not later than March 1 of 2004, and that's
Considerable, right.
Nine, 10 months from now. Carolyn, you want to, do you have any input you want to give on this? Do you want to come down? Please. Is there another date that was there that's been changed? We've got, purchase the same on it before November 1, provided escrows open in conjunction with each agreement to purchase a mobile home, pad, or space by a qualified lower-income resident, shall close earlier than March 1 of 2004.
Well, my problem with that is that the low-income resident, the majority of them, cannot close escrows until the impromptu funds become available, and there isn't even an open application for those funds at this time. So that's my concern. I'm hoping that I can talk to Mr. Goldstein, I haven't been able to talk with him, and let him understand that that is a concern, and to see if he will extend that date at least until those funds become available. But on the other hand, I would not like to see you throw out the baby with the bathwater tonight, because there are too many pluses in the agreement that benefit the residents. But that was a concern of mine.
Thank you, Carolyn. John, can you, John Rehman, can you address improv schedule? And Sue, do you have anything you want to add to this? We'd welcome your input on this, please. I think you understand the issue. The date is fixed at March 1, 2004. There's concerns about improv. Can you give us your side, please?
Sure. The issue that Carolyn is concerned about, as well as the park owner, is, if you recall, we've applied last fall, we came within eight people in having the support, and there was heavy lobbying from the homeowners' association, and people did not fill them out. And there will be another round this fall, which we'll be applying for, and the goal is to make sure that people don't say, "Well, we'll do it next year," or "the next year." There is, as I'm sure you're aware, been a lot of discussion about what happens if not all the monies used by, or there's not 100 people, and there's been discussions about how to deal with the issue. If we make the application, we get granted the money, and improv says, "Well, we can close April 1, not March 1," and that would be dealt with at that time. The goal, and I was not at the meetings either on the negotiations, but I do know that Mr. Goldstein and Mr. Close and Mr. Winder were all aware that this was an issue in terms of making sure that we had an agreement that would be able to address the low-income households. But it was a balancing act in terms of the date, and we may be back before you to get an amendment to have to change that date.
To extend.
Correct.
Is it your belief that your client is willing to at least extend based on those who have applied and do qualify for improv, that they can allow the time adequate to obviously get the monies?
If we get the application in and we don't have the same kind of issues that we had last time, so that the application is approved, that's my belief, yes.
I think the council's concern is to try to provide as much safety for as many residents as possible.
Correct.
And if the cycle is such that improv is going to work within the March 1, 2004 deadline, we're okay, but if it needs a little bit of loose interpretation, extension, you believe we have the owner's cooperation.
Right, and we should be able to. I have closed them within the timeframe that will be allocated. It does require cooperation with your staff, my staff, and the residents to get everything in, but I've certainly closed them within that kind of timeframe.
Okay.
One other comment I might make is that
Mr. Alshire.
Thank you, Sue. A couple of weeks ago, when we were dealing with Mr. Close concerning some of these issues, I had a concern that the intent was to avoid spending the $500,000. We did work out a side letter that I believe the park owner is willing to spend all of that money and figure out ways of doing it if he, if it produces actual conversions, actual sales of the park. You know, I might also add that I do understand the long history that we have here, and there's certainly, as much as any entity that I've dealt with, there has, there's a record here that gives us grounds for concern about carrying out and implementing such an agreement. I will say that for the first time in a decade, we came to an agreement about something. It's in writing, it's in front of you. Hopefully, this bodes well. The rejection of this agreement, though, at this point in time, would not change the fact of the conversion. The subdivision map was approved. This is dealing with the issue of whether we're going to provide the assistance. The purpose of the assistance is to get as many people to qualify as possible. I appreciate the point that there may be alternative ways the city would spend a half-million dollars of housing money. At the same time, it has been kind of on the table with the council over quite a period of time that there was a willingness to potentially provide some assistance. So our feeling in trying to negotiate this was that the actual conversion is not a part of this agreement. It's providing the assistance, and it's also protecting the city. The park owner still has his claims out against the city. Those are claims that could be brought against us up until the point in time where there is an actual settlement agreement, and that's what this incorporates.
Okay. Further comments or questions? It's the council's pleasure.
Go ahead, Dan.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hodges.
Just quickly, I go back a long ways with this. I remember the day he bought the park. I was on the rent review commission, and the following day, he came in and asked for a rent increase, and I simply can't vote for this. There's just no way. It goes against everything that I have been fighting for, for what, 18 years or whatever it is, and so I just want people to know that.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I certainly have not been dealing with it as long as the rest of the council sitting here, although we did deal with it at planning. I don't think, and I think any one of us, as has been said before, feel this is how we would, what we would have liked it to go. However, I do note, as Mr. Alshire noted, we've been, we've been at this for 10 years. This is the first time we have in a written agreement, and it, there just comes a time where you have to, you have to do the best that you can for all the parties involved, and I think this has done it, as this, as close as we're going to get from an agreement standpoint. And I disagree with Mr. Oden that, actually, I think it's a perfect use of housing funds. I think it's a perfect use. This is what housing funds are for, and at least my interpretation. So I will be making the motion for this
Minute order.
And I'll second it.
Motion for approval on Mr. Mills, and seconded by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Additional comments or questions? I'll ask for a roll call.
Ms. Hodges?
No.
Mr. Mills?
Hi.
Mr. Oden?
No.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 3-2, it's approved. Let's turn now to item 7. This is ordinance for, that's all right, thank you, for second reading and adoption. And counsel, if it's your pleasure, I'll ask that you make a motion such that you will read title and wave text.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reddy.
We would ask to reintroduce this, and I would turn it over to the city attorney for the reasons why.
There are two ordinances. Perhaps you could go ahead with item A, and then I have a comment on the Quimby matter.
All right. Counsel, what's your pleasure on item A? It's two separate ordinances for second reading. First one is rent.
Are there any changes?
No, there are no changes. It's the second reading on the, item A is just second reading.
I'll move ordinance A. A for second reading.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hodges, and seconded by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Again, reading text only of title and waving text.
It's the, just for clarification, it's the ordinance concerning the rental home, mobile home parks ownership provision that the council introduced at the last meeting.
Last meeting.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
And quick, if you'll read title?
This would be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending section 4.08.1362, the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to rental adjustments following conversion of rental mobile home parks to resident ownership.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 5-0. That takes care of the rent. Let's talk about the Park Act, and Mr. Reddy, I think you have some updates on this. Is this for reintroduction, then?
It'd be reintroduction, and Mr. Evans is passing out the changes, and he and Mr. Alshire will explain the reasons for the reintroduction. They need to make some changes, and they turn out to be slightly more substantive, and that's why Mr. Alshire will explain. Thank you.
Well, we basically had one set of changes. Following your action at the last meeting of introducing this ordinance, we had further conversation with Mr. Kibbe concerning some issues that he had with your action, and we believe that some of his recommended changes are appropriate, and the ordinance, actually the second ordinance, you've got one listed, 7B2 and 7B1. 7B2 makes all of the changes that he asked you to make, including the ones that he stood up and talked about tonight. We have some concerns with making all of these changes, and the version of the ordinance, which is 7B1, does not make some of the changes, which we think are appropriate, but does not make all of the changes. The essential difference between the two is the issue, he's, you've heard him on several occasions make the comment that there should be a study, basically, of the impact, and that this type of study to establish a nexus should be done before you adopt this ordinance. We believe that although we had to move forward here on pretty short notice, Mr. Evans' staff report did provide a nexus describing how he had calculated the fee, what the facilities were that were taken into account. You remember the discussion about whether it was five per thousand, or three, or four, and what types of things we were counting to get to that number. A pure Quimby Act ordinance, which is what he has been advocating, would not include charging a fee, for example, on apartment units. So apartment units wouldn't pay a fee. If you use the broader type approach, which involves, just as an example, you'll see that in version 7B1, the very first sentence says, "Under Government Code Sections 66,000 and 66,477." Well, 66,477 is the Quimby Act. We've listed both code sections, because our position is that this ordinance is appropriate under both of those code sections, and under the 66,000, you could also have the builders of apartment units pay the fee. The residents use park facilities. Whether they live in a single-family residence or in a multifamily residence, they use park facilities. So we believe that it is appropriate to charge the fee for persons that use all type of residential facilities. Now, it is true that we didn't do a six-month nexus study, we didn't give you a, you know, 200-page nexus study, but we believe that Mr. Evans' report, the information that was gathered, was a reasonable effort to try and establish the basis of the fee, and the calculation of the monies that would be produced was done on the basis of the total expected, projected growth that would occur in the city. Mr. Kibbe would prefer that you just act in terms of a pure, limited Quimby ordinance, that you go through, and then it wouldn't apply to apartments. You go through this fee study, and then, based upon the fee study, you could come in with another ordinance at another point in time to try, and then that type of ordinance he agrees could apply to apartments and other types of residential units. We just think that, given the urgency of the situation, and again, given the effort that we went through, that the council would prefer to try and get all that type of construction currently. There's nothing wrong with Mr. Kibbe's approach, would be perfectly appropriate to do it that way. I guess we're just advocating a little more aggressive approach at this point in time, but the council has a choice. There's another set of changes that Mr. Kibbe objected to, how we gave credit for, against fees. There was some language in the ordinance that you introduced that did not give full credit, and in his objection to that language, we think that those were good objections. So the reason we're not just going forward with second reading is we think that those comments are very appropriate, and we should make those changes, and because they're substantive changes from what you did last time, we think you would have to reintroduce the ordinance. But your choice is, in essence, to either go with an ordinance that's just limited to the Quimby Act approach, or to a broader approach.
All right. Now, what I want to get clarification on, on the agenda packet, page 7B in our agenda packet, is that 7B1?
No, that's
7B1 actually has modifications
Yes.
beyond what we have in our agenda.
That's correct.
Discard what's in the agenda packet, or the option is accept it as it was done? Or is that flawed?
You could accept it as it was done. Mr. Kibbe raised objections as to how we do the credit. We think he's correct, and we think that what's in front of you in your agenda packet is probably flawed.
All right. So then with that, 7B1 or 7B2 is up for debate and discussion tonight for first reading.
That would be our suggestion.
All right. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mills.
Then, if I understand, the 7B1 reflect the credit items that Mr. Kibbe brought forth?
Yes, the change in the credit language is in both versions, 7B1 and B2.
And the difference between B1 and B2 is the 66,000?
Yes, because the pure
Can we do this, though? For the people listening at home, 66,000 makes no reference.
Well
It is the Government Code Section 66,000.
Right.
It's not money, it's not an address, it's a government code section, right?
That's correct, and basically, the Quimby Act provisions relate to subdivisions. So if you don't have a subdivision of property, the Quimby Act provisions do not apply. So there is residential development that occurs in the city where there's no subdivision. It's already an existing lot, or it's an apartment project. That residential development is not a subdivision, and therefore, the Quimby Act provisions don't really apply to it. Now, Mr. Kibbe was basically saying, you ought to have, you heard tonight, he was talking about, well, it's a pure approach. You should have a pure Quimby Act ordinance, and not dilute it or make it impure by adding this other into it, and you should have two totally separate approaches. And in several cities that I have worked in, we have ordinances where the two things are integrated together. I don't think, I don't think he's saying you can't integrate the two. He's arguing that you didn't do a good enough study to justify the non-Quimby. And I'm saying, you know, people do these studies, and they take a year to do them. So we did it very quick, but it really doesn't matter how quickly you do it, it's whether there is a rationale, and you can explain how you got from A to B, and I think you all heard at the study session, we went into quite a bit of detail as to how Mr. Evans had analyzed this to gather this information and break, and justify what the amount was.
Mr.?
Mr. Oden.
I think I like the pure approach as opposed to the hybrid. We can still accomplish the, I think you referred to it as the part fee separately. You know, one of my first questions was whether or not we could do this, and would it be challenged? And I know that people can challenge you over anything, but at least if we follow the steps, Quimby is, will be separate and solid, we won't have to worry about it, and then we can come back, you know? Even if, how long would it take to do the part fee?
Well, I guess I'd refer back, you recall, we were talking about in the canyon approach, doing a fee study on trying to figure out what, how we were going to charge for that infrastructure, and you probably recall, we started talking about that six months ago. We are in the middle of trying to generate fee studies in a number of different areas, and the more things you study, the more complicated it gets, and I, I just seriously, from my experience of doing these in the past, I'd be very surprised, if you start all over, try and do a study, I'd be very surprised if you have anything back within six months.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I think that I would opt to, if it's, to deal with the complications beforehand, then afterward, just the fact that it's new, and the kind of relationship that we have sometimes with the community, that I think it'll be challenging, that we're just setting ourselves up. So I would rather just do them separately, do our homework, make sure it's right, and implement it. The Quimby we have, we know it's solid. Let's just go with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon.
Who would pay for the study? I mean, out of what fund would that come from?
Well, the city would pay, I don't
Yes, I know that, but we don't have it budgeted.
I don't know what the actual cost would be, but there's several different funds that could pay for it. It could come out of the actual, it could be reimbursed from the Quimby Fund ultimately.
Actually, if I could perhaps answer that question, you'll recall during our budget presentation, and also that of the Development Task Force, the city staff recommended that we do a comprehensive fee analysis. One of the areas that we were looking into was developer impact fees. We currently have a proposal from several firms to do such a study, and we have budgeted $50,000 in the current year budget to conduct a study. One of the things that could be included in the developer impact fee study is the Quimby Act or a park fee ordinance, so either one of those two could be added into the developer impact fee study, which will take, as the city attorney mentioned, approximately six months to complete.
Well, I, unlike Mr. Oden, like 7B1. I believe we pay a city attorney who comes and brings experience from other cities, and with that, I yield to your advice.
I mean, I'm not telling you which way you ought to go.
I understand.
I'm saying there's two choices, and we've, we feel that you can justify either approach.
And I respect that.
Very good. Mr. Oden?
Yes, I think that Mr. Kibbe, who is the president of the Builders Association here, Building Industry Association, and he's had an opportunity to work with multiple cities here in the valley specifically in dealing with these issues, so I think he brings special expertise to us at this time, and it's free, and it's free. So I think it would be prudent to hear his words at this time, and So I think it would be prudent to hear his words at this time, and take heed.
Thank you. The council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Alshire, if we approve 7B1 at this time, which takes into account the apartments, I mean, what we're looking at this time, that's nothing to say that we, that when the, when, because we are pursuing the park fee as well. Because we are, our intent is to tax fairly every bit of new construction in the city, in fill lots, apartments, whatever. So we are, we are working on that. Am I correct?
I think the fee study that we have been working on, we're not going to include a park fee. But it would be perfectly, it's certainly an option that you could adopt this, and at the same time, include the park fee study in the other study that's being done. If that study comes to a different conclusion about the amount of the fee, it could be revised at that point in time. The difference is that those non-subdivision residential developments that occur between now and when that study comes up would be included in the fee. But any of these fee approaches, it remains an option to take a second look, look at it in more detail, change your approach at a later point in time.
And I think that's where I'm headed. I understand what Mr. Kibbe's saying. But, on the other hand, I don't want to take six months and miss an opportunity that we've already taken 50 years and let gone by. Not quite 50 years, but several years that we've, that we've created, you know, of more of a, we've created a problem, and we're looking to solve it as fast as we can. And I don't want to really miss the opportunity to solve it, even if it is six months, especially at the rate of construction that's going on in the city right now. So my thought is that we could deal with 7B1 right now, and then ask staff to continue on with the park study fee, which would address infill lots, which would address other types of constructions, does not address, are not allowed to be addressed in 7B1. And then we could, if we felt like we wanted to, when that was ready, we could eliminate $66,000 from, from what we're acting on, and put it into the park fee one. Is that correct?
Yes, you could. You can either create a whole separate ordinance, or I think Mr. Kibbe is agreeing that if you have the sort of study that he's thinking about, that you still could have it in the same ordinance. Doesn't have to be a separate ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions or comments? It is my thinking to do as much as we can, as quickly as we can, to generate as much revenue as possible for the continual expansion of parks and recreation facilities and amenities in the city of Palm Springs. And it appears as though 7B1 is the direction that gives us the greatest opportunity for generation of revenue. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I'd like to move, well, we're looking at, 7B1, you're suggesting this become a first reading, then?
Yes.
Yes. You basically are reintroducing the ordinance that you did previously with the revisions. And the revisions, 7B1 just deletes some of this credit language from what you did before, which Mr. Kibbe is certainly in agreement with.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same 7B1. 7B1 title page does not have a stricken line on the first paragraph. 7B2 has a stricken line on the first paragraph. Right?
That's correct. And the reason, in terms of showing the strikes, just as an example, on 7B1, the new one that was handed out, if you go to page six, you will see some deletions on page six.
Yes.
That language is in the document that's in your agenda packet. So the reason it's a reintroduction is we're deleting the stricken language that is shown in 7B1 from the ordinance you adopted last, introduced last week.
Okay. All right. So where are we, council? 7B1?
I'm making a motion to approve 7B1 for first reading, and that we, along with that, we are authorizing staff to continue on pursuing the requirements for a park fee that would deal with other construction not dealt with in 7B1.
Well, the-
Tell me what I did wrong.
Okay. Our position is 7B1 deals with everything.
Right.
But it's based upon the fee study that the planning director did. Well, I think your additional caveat is, you would like a, another fee study done for park fees as a part of the fee study that Mr. Butzloff was talking about, and that could come back for a modification of the ordinance if appropriate.
That's what I was, that's where I was headed.
Well, let's turn to Mr. Evans for his clarification.
At last week's meeting, the council voted on that. That issue gave us the direction when you introduced the first ordinance. You said introduce the first ordinance and directed staff to prepare the park fee study. So I think my interpretation is we've already had that direction.
Second by Sorella Spurgeon. This is the introduction of 7B1. To read title, waving text.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges.
I'm not going to vote for this. I wasn't here, as everybody knows, but I did watch it on TV. And I can honestly tell you that it was probably one of the most confusing things to watch on TV that I've ever seen. Because it's been, for whatever reason, pushed through staff. It, all of a sudden, is an urgency. Now, I don't know how long the Quimbi Act has been in existence, but I'm sure it didn't start six months ago. But all of a sudden, it's six months as far as this city is concerned. I have never really felt, in watching the tapes or watching on TV, that frankly, too many people knew what the hell they were talking about. You had the five, you had three, nobody knew what it was, nobody knew what the difference was. The figures were never correct. Nobody had the correct figures when they were bringing them to council. I don't know, I give a lot of credit to Mr. Kibbe, because I think this is his expertise. This is his field. He's had a lot to do with interpretation of this particular ordinance. And I think, for whatever reason, we are trying to push this through without the proper documentation, and I think it's a mistake.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
Initially, when we had the discussion regarding Quimbi, it was at a study session, and it was to come to us as an emergency ordinance. Well, we didn't go with the emergency ordinance, and we've taken some time. And even with that, tonight, we're still getting papers with last-minute revisions. And it's because we haven't thoroughly gone through this. Now, basically, from what I have read about Quimbi, I support it. I think it's a good thing for the city. I don't, and the fact is, if we implement just Quimbi, we will start receiving revenues that we've never received before. But to try to lump everything in it, and try to make it fit and work when we haven't exhausted all of our resources to determine whether or not it's legal, and whether or not it's accurate, I think we're making a mistake. If this was just Quimbi, you'd have my support, 100%. But this hybrid, I am concerned about. And the fact is, last week, we delayed to get Mr. Kibbe's input. He's given it, and we're not listening. Why did we delay it? We could have just done this last week if we weren't going to listen.
I think we-
Because he made corrections, and they were accurate.
We actually have made almost all of the, we have addressed the concerns Mr. Kibbe had, except for one, and that's the $66,000. And Mr. Alshire is assuring us that he's done it before, and it's not a problem, as Ms. Sorella Spurgeon said. Call for a question, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Mills, second by Sorella Spurgeon, to approve 7B1. I'll ask for a roll call. I'll ask for title.
Thank you. This would be an ordinance of the city of Palm Springs establishing park fees. Ms. Hodges?
No.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
No.
Ms. Sorella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 3-2 passes. Item eight is Palm Springs Youth Center. Mr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This agreement has been negotiated by the city attorney, and I would ask him to give the report to city council. Thank you.
Brief report, okay. Concerning the Palm Springs Youth Center, we actually had a deed restriction record against the property concerning any sale or transfer of the youth center. The youth center was, has entered into a transaction with the YMCA, for the YMCA to purchase the youth center. Our deed restriction was a potential problem in that transaction. The deed restriction was done quite a time ago, and was vague and difficult to apply. We've been involved in a process to replace it with a different provision. We have successfully negotiated that, and the new provision does provide that ultimately the facility will remain available in the community for youth and other activities that are related to the Y. If the Y were to sell it in the future, the city would have an opportunity to purchase it. And if the city chose not to purchase it, whatever the profits are that the Y made in the sale would go into a fund to be used for youth and other Y-type of activities in the community. It actually sets up a trust fund. So what has been accomplished through this negotiation is to create a mechanism so that if the Y operates it for its activities, it benefits the community. If the Y were to decide not to do that, there's a potential for the city either taking the facility over, or to get the surplus profit, and be able to utilize that through the trust for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Alshire. Any questions or comments on staff report?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the minute order. Second.
Motion for approval by Ms. Hodges, and second by Ms. Sorella Spurgeon. Additional comments?
My comment is that I think this is an opportunity that the youth center finally has to be successful. And we, as a city, have finally helped them for what, hopefully, is the last time.
Oh, they'll be back for CDBG money.
That's true.
We all know that. All right. Other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It has just been a while since we've gone over those points that you identified in your staff report. It probably would have been a little better for me, anyway, if we had gone over this in closed session, because I can't remember all the deal points that we had looked at initially. And to try to, you know, catch up with all of that right now is, you know, a little difficult, but for the future.
I'm sorry, and I could have gone into more detail here. I know it's kind of late. You know, suffice to say that with all of the components that we discussed it several times in closed session, ultimately, we were able to work out satisfactory language on all of those points. And so we were fully satisfied that it met the objectives that the council set for us in trying to negotiate this.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? I'll ask for a roll call.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 5-0 deemed unanimous. Item nine is a settlement agreement for Wilkinson and Basler. Mr. Ready?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're just asking you to affirm the decisions from closed session in last week's meeting on both of these settlements. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move both minute orders.
Second.
Motion for approval by Ms. Hodges, and second by Mr. Mills. Questions, comments? One quick question from Mr. Alshire on page two, paragraph three, discovery of different, isn't, shouldn't I say "or additional facts"?
Yes.
Not "of additional facts"?
Correct.
Okay. And these are the agreed-upon amounts. Again, we're trying to go through this, this was in our packet. This was the agreed-upon dollar amounts. Very good. Any additional comments or questions? We have a motion by Ms. Hodges, and second by Mr. Mills, to move both minute orders. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 5-0 deemed unanimous. That then completes the work of the special meeting. Mr. Ready, you want to guide us as to where we're going from here now?
Mr. Mayor, we do have the study session, and we have one item on the study session agenda. Actually, actually, Mr. Mayor, the clerk has requested just a very short break.
Okay, we'll take a slight recess, so she can do some technological things, and then we'll come back. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We'll reconvene the study session and we'll turn to our city attorney for a closed session report. Mr. Alshire?
Mr. Mayor, could you do a roll call for this first?
I will most certainly do so. A roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
That's when you go.
Sorry. Ms. Hodges? Absent. Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rosburgian?
Here.
Mr. Kleindt?
Here.
Thank you.
Do you want to report on the posting of the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No.
Thank you. I'll turn to our city attorney for a closed session report, please.
Yes, council needs to be in closed session. Real property negotiations for the agency involving Plaza Theater, we have SAS report, no action was taken. Concerning Prairie Theater with the Agua Caliente ban, we gave a SAS report, no action was taken. Concerning the parking structure property with Tom Adamo, we gave a SAS report, no action was taken. Concerning the reservoir site, the listed item, we did not discuss it. Also, for the city, real property negotiations concerning Desert Water Agency, that was not discussed. The item involving the Nichols Family Trust at Tramway Road, we gave a SAS report, no action was taken. The item involving the BLM land at Trambury Road was not discussed. The item involving the Walter Family Partnership was not discussed. The item concerning 11 acres at 19th Avenue, we gave a SAS report, no action was taken. Exposure to litigation in two cases was not discussed. Initiation of litigation in one case, we gave a SAS report, no action was taken. The council did add an item to the agenda concerning labor negotiations. We gave a SAS report on that, no action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Alshire. We'll turn now to public comments. Anyone wishing to address council on matters within the jurisdiction? Very good, seeing no one. We'll turn to council comments, requests, or reports. Council?
Just a report, I was on vacation, flew in just for tonight's meeting and I'll be leaving again tomorrow on some city business and then some personal business for the weekend. So I'll be back in the office on Monday. I know there's a pile of messages and emails waiting for me.
Item F is city manager comments, follow-ups, or requests. Mr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. I would like to make one notation regarding the council agenda. Because of the lateness of the hour, we have the Walk of Stars presentation. I would request, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, if we could move the citizen survey to the meeting on the 30th. And before you make that decision, one of the reasons why is twofold. One, we originally had planned to have the Walk of Stars and Mr. Franzell to talk on the 30th. Has it worked out? It worked out better. They would speak this evening. A second portion is, a second thing I would like to note is, when we had our last docket review, we had talked about the admissions tax. And as it had turned out, it is really not possible for us to get council the full information and the types of information we need to give you, the whole range of information to make a decision on the admissions tax for next week. So what we would like to do is postpone that discussion until after you get back from the August break. So what that means is, next week, we would have on the study session only the citizen survey because it is a lengthy report. We would like to move that to next week and just have the Walk of Stars for this evening.
Very good.
And then also then move the admissions tax discussion until after the break.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Let's turn to our item, then, only one for tonight, which is the Palm Springs Walk of Stars.
Thank you. I would like to frame the issue, and Troy Bootsloff is going to give the report, but we have with us this evening, as you can see, Gerhart Franzell, who has had the contract for the Walk of Stars. And he has with him also this evening a couple of his board members whom we have invited, and I'm sure you'll hear from them later in the presentation. Our discussion tonight, council, is centered around, and we will ask for you to make a decision on whether you want us to renew the contract, extend it, or do a request for proposal. And with that, I would ask Troy Bootsloff to basically give the report and bring you up to speed on some of the issues that have evolved and what we are looking for your guidance on. With that, Troy, would you please proceed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ready. Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, the Walk of Stars program has been in existence since 1992. Since its inception, the Walk of Stars program has dedicated 235 stars, recognizing show business-related and local pioneers who have contributed to the charm and worldwide prominence of Palm Springs. Tonight, to aid you in your discussion regarding this program, we've assembled several documents for your review. First of all, we have the Contract Services Agreement with the Palm Springs Walk of Stars. I will note that this contract has expired. It actually was entered into in 1997 with a five-year term expiring in March 1st of 2002. Although the contract does contain an option to extend for an additional five-year term, neither party acted upon this option, so thus the agreement is currently expired and we are operating without an agreement. The second document we have tonight is the current Board of Directors. Third, we have the current star dedication criteria. And I will make a note about this. The existing agreement, or the now-expired agreement, originally contained Exhibit G, which contained the star criteria for the dedication of stars for this Walk of Stars program. There appears to be some differences between the agreed-upon star criteria and the now-current star dedication criteria, and that may be an issue the city council may wish to address as part of this discussion. For example, added to the list of possible star dedications are military and hotel Palm Springs International Film Festival special honorees. These two categories were not included in the original star dedication criteria that was adopted by council in 1997. In addition, there's a new caveat added to the star dedication criteria that any unused donation that is collected by the Walk of Stars program will be used to support local scholarship programs for high school seniors seeking careers in performing arts. Again, this criteria, or this particular provision, was not included in the original star dedication criteria in Exhibit G. The next document that we have is the dedicated stars that have been actually put into place. And again, as I mentioned, 235 stars have been dedicated since the program's inception. Then we have the upcoming list of star dedications. Several dedications are planned for the month of October, which means that the council will have to make a decision whether or not to do something with this agreement or do something differently so that changes can be made in the scheduling for those upcoming star dedications. Finally, on the issue of the maintenance fund, I've incorporated into the documentation that you have the current balance of the maintenance fund. This is an issue that the council may wish to discuss as well. The original agreement with the Palm Springs Walk of Stars provided for the establishment of a maintenance fund, this was to be used to keep the stars clean and to do annual maintenance. In addition, there is a requirement that should the coefficient of friction of the star fall below 0.75% of the sandblasted surface, the star has to be resurfaced. The current maintenance fee that is collected for each star dedication is $25. Based upon the amount of money remaining in the fund, it appears that this amount may be insufficient to cover the ongoing maintenance of the Walk of Stars program. At the conclusion of tonight's discussion, council, staff is seeking direction on whether to extend the existing agreement, negotiate a new agreement, prepare an RFP or request for proposals, and solicit proposals to operate this program, or finally to terminate the program. Now, the staff or Mr. Franzell can certainly walk you through the individual documents that are contained in your packet or answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, can I add just one thing? On that maintenance fund issue, the original intent when we prepared the agreement was that the amount that would be set aside for each dedication was going to be reviewed after a certain number of placements and some experience with the maintenance. And there was basically reports that were to be submitted to the city, and the city had the opportunity under the contract to go back and review and up that amount. And I just think administratively, that process really never occurred. It was clearly set at a very low level to begin with, but the thinking was, based upon experience, it was going to get revised. And I don't think anybody thought at the beginning that that $25 bucks was really going to get us very far.
How much is in the maintenance fund now?
Presently, there is almost $1,600, $1,599 remaining in the account. Since the program was started, at least since 1997, with the last current agreement, when the first agreement was entered into, $3,550 has been collected.
Additional counsel? Any additional staff report on this issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Was, does staff have any input on perhaps what the maintenance fund should be, any method of getting to a number other than the 25?
We really haven't analyzed the actual cost to provide the cleaning. However, in looking at the current condition of a number of the stars, it's very obvious that some of them are going to require resurfacing. I don't believe a $25 fee will cover the cost of the resurfacing in addition to the ongoing maintenance cost of the stars. So we would probably have to have our downtown experience crews take a look at what the cost to maintain these stars and do a more aggressive work on the stars themselves to find out what the actual cost of the fee should be.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Who is the contract officer for the city?
Probably our city manager.
That would be me. That would be myself, councilman.
Okay, well, in the contract, it has Alan Denfield, who was an employee here years ago, and he wasn't the city manager, so...
We're in the process now, councilman. That's one of the reasons why you see this contract, it ended about a year ago. I mean, we're in the process now of, you know, of redoing our contract process. And that's one of the things that we're going to be doing is putting a different kind of tracking system in process, and you'll see some changes.
Okay. One of my concerns, I know at times we've had a star dedication, and the setup was right next to a trash can or bench, and they were filthy. I mean, trash everywhere, so I had to call people at the last minute to come. And here we have visitors and guests in our city, and especially on some of them where, you know, these were renowned, very renowned people. I mean, certainly we do some where people don't know the, you know, the name or the person. There are others that, you know, everyone knows. And it was embarrassing. So whatever role we play, I think it's important that they come to the city of Palm Springs. And it's on the Palm Springs Walk of Stars. So we need to make sure that our image is not tarnished by this presentation. So that's why I'm asking, who's responsible? Who is the GO between, you know, between the Walk of Stars and the city to make sure that those things are set up properly?
This contract will be assigned to Jerry Ogburn from the downtown office.
That sounds good. Do we have any input on the board? And does it change? Are the people who are listed here, are they the current board members? Or were they board members from the beginning? And what is the active committee?
I would ask for a correction if I'm wrong in this from Mr. Franzell, but I believe the list that we provided to you in your packet is the list of current board members based on the information that he provided to us over the last 30 days.
Is this a new board? Because there are people that I know who were board members, and I don't see their names.
I thought I'd never get up here. City council, Mr. Mayor? Board members come and go. They either move away, retire, or God forbid, they even die. We have a present new board, and that may not coincide with what you have. There's Mr. Robert Alexander, Max Salick, Dr. Renee Delacqua, Bill Beck, Susan Hart, Dan Farmer, sitting over here, Jackie Lee Houston. Those are the board members. Nicole Franzell is administrative, Joey English co-host, and David Byrne, legal counsel. Then we have honorary board members, Barbara Foster, past president, retired, Earl Greenberg, Patrick McCarthy, Nancy Sinatra, Frank Bogart, Mel Haver, and Patricia Bosley. So far, as the board goes. That board will be in effect if and when we start a new season. If I may address the city council about the cleaning fund. We have 236 stars. You missed one. And since the beginning, we've been paying $100 for the city proclamation, which I write. So all the secretary has to do is put it in the computer and put it in a frame. If that... If that money would have been in the city, put into a cleaning fund, we'd have over $23,000 in the fund. I'm even willing to renegotiate that fund and increase it if we consider the $100 to maybe $150. That would bolster the fund even more. As far as the cleaning is concerned, the city crew, the steam cleaning, once a month, is not always very reliable. They're supposed to notify us when the cleaning time comes around so we can work with them, put the cleaning solution on, and the steam hoses off. And that happens maybe twice or three times a year, and it should happen every month. And you were right about the trash cans. I have often called on my cellphone from the site to get a cleaning crew out there, but mostly to no avail. I'd be more than happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I think I'd like to suggest that, I think it's real important. This program is outstanding, and I certainly love participating and dedicating the stars. But it's important to me that we have a program and that the board is actively involved. Gerhart, you're always there. We always see you, and we don't see the board. I'd like to really know that the board is involved and that they, even on some of these issues that we're looking, that we're discussing tonight, I'd like the board to perhaps have a discussion and to make some specific recommendations to us about how they would like to see us work with them. This is an excellent program. I think it's gotten to a point where our involvement needs to be different than what it's been in the past. And I'm not sure how I want to say that that should work at this time, but I think with the input of the board and having them come back and make some specific recommendations to us, so that we have the confidence that the program isn't hinging on a person or a personality, but there's an organization that's going to make sure that this continues to thrive. And I certainly hope that it does.
You're quite correct. The board, in the past, I was not totally happy with. So this break in proceedings gave me a chance to seek out a new board. And the new board will be totally different from the old board and will hopefully satisfy your wishes.
Okay. Additional comments, or questions, direction, information you want brought forward? Here's what I need. And Gerhart, you can return to your seat. I think this is just back and forth with the staff now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one other comment?
Yes, sir.
In Exhibit A of the ownership of the stars, item number three, it says refusal of dedication. The city retains the right to refuse to accept the stars. And upon such refusal, the contract agrees to remove the stars within a reasonable time. That is one paragraph that I can't live with. I mean, how can I take out 236 stars?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's what I'd like to get some information on for the next session on this. I'd like to get a complete board list, current board list. I'd like to make sure that any and all insurance documents that are required under the contract, whether under the current conditions or new provisions, are indeed secured. And we do in fact have all that. I'd like an inventory, if not an inspection, of all of the stars themselves. What's this friction coefficient? How's it looking? How many have you got replaced? How many are broken, chipped, damaged, stained, unkept, unclean? Sort of a status as to what's going on, because I don't know if in fact you've got enough money, if in fact all of them are dirty or broken. I don't have any idea what that is. I'd like to know a little bit more about this maintenance fund and how it should be properly structured. We've been going through this now for a number of years. We should probably know by now whether it's balanced or unbalanced. Based on Mr. Oden's question about who's the agent, I would suggest, as opposed to stating the name of the people in the second paragraph, just state the position. And whoever is the president of the Walk of Stars is that person, whoever the city manager or his appointee is. So you don't have to lock in a person's name. Things do move, as Mr. Oden pointed out. I'd like to get a clear description, and I don't want to just give away the commitment, because it comes with a cost, and we don't have that kind of funding here. But if there is a city commitment, one of the clauses in here talks about these additional activities are paid for by the Walk of Stars. But when it comes to, you know, bans and pomp and circumstance, that's all borne by them. But if you're going to start dealing with cleanup or street closures or parking, because I know that in the work that I've done, and the council's done it when I couldn't do it, we've all done Walk of Stars, there are times when there's a small crowd, and there's times when there's a large crowd. And the large crowd becomes exciting, but it also becomes a bit of a safety issue, because now people can't use the sidewalk, and they're walking in the streets, they're going through parked cars, traffic's going along. So I mean, we have to get some sort of a provision that indicates that we're coordinating, we're allowing them to do this, and we're coordinating so that we don't get ourselves in some sort of liability. We establish some sort of a walkway. You have to have a no parking zone in advance so people are clear of it or otherwise, but a little more coordinated. I've seen it where people are coming and going, and even set aside parking for the guests to pull up, depending on what vehicle they choose, or carriage in some cases. I'll speak to the proclamation issue. There's more work on the proclamation than indicated by Gerhart. Although he gives us the text, and again, I'm not participating in this, my secretary goes through it, rewrites it, adds the flowery fufu that you've all read for years, and gives it some flow, and basically doesn't change nor alter facts, because that's not her task. It's just to put it in some sort of cohesive fashion that's in the format of a proclamation. And I want, I don't want to feel as though the $100 charge isn't earned by the staff. There are days where I'm coming to the office and all we see is stacked up proclamations. They're just backing up when they're in season. The cost of the frame is incurred and a setup charge, and now she's not doing her normal work, she's doing this work. So there are charges, there are costs associated with it. And I'd like to get some input on rewrites, because we do get them brought in by the recipient saying, this is not true, this is not accurate. Would you rewrite it? Now, it's not just put it in the computer and press it out. It's dismantle the entire frame, pull it all out, dismount, retype it, remount, reassemble the frame. I mean, it takes an hour and a half sometimes to do this. And I want to understand that there's a cost to your staff. They're not doing city work, per se. They're doing Walk of Stars work. And if there's a rewrite, there should be some sort of a cost associated. If it's our fault, obviously, it's our fault. But there should be a cost associated with that, because it's, it is in fact frequent. So those are the kinds of things I need to look at. And on the maintenance fund, you can't do much maintenance with $1,600. So I think it's woefully inadequate. And unless we're going to bear the cost, which is up for debate, the $1,600 is not going to be realistic in doing the maintenance on these things. It's a great program, and I support it, but I think you have to just look at it after five years. Other council comments? Anything else? Gerhart, you can work with staff on direction and redirection. Mr. Ready, how do you plan on bringing this forward?
Counsel, we, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we were looking for some direction if in fact you would like us to extend this contract or do an RFP for a new contract.
Oh, I can't say RFP. It'd have to be just an extension of the current, but I think some of the conditions that the council brought forward have to be at least investigated and then reported out.
All right. So then what we'll do is we'll look into some of the matters you've raised. We can bring that back to another study session, but the question remains, do you want the current contractor, as we have it now, to proceed with his program for the early season? I believe he has October dates ready to go.
As far as I'm concerned, that's okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Oden?
I think that between now and October, it would be more than enough time for his board to meet and to get back to us with some information, and we can continue down this track.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other questions out of legal should be folded back and blended in. There's a lot of clauses in the early document that are no longer relevant in today's law, as you well know. '97 law has changed to 2003.
Well, obviously, the ultimate contract will need, you'll need a new contract.
Yep, rebuild.
So there's no question about that. But what I understand the council direction is that at this point in time, without actually having a contract, we will permit Mr. Franzell to proceed in the manner that he has done it in the past until something else happens. Because although there is, in one sense, a lot of time until October, the reality is that if you came back after August in September and were getting new information and thinking about doing something different, by then, he's advertised and set the event, and there's really not enough time for him to reprogram it, so...
I might suggest that maybe we look at the idea, because once he commits to these stars, you can't ask for more money after they've been bought. Maybe we can increase the maintenance fee now, now, knowing that you don't have enough money in it now, at the $25. And then you and Mr. Franzell can figure out what that dollar amount is and at least get that adjustment into this year's action now. So as they're buying it, they're paying a little more with the intent of getting that maintenance fund. Because at $25, you can't do anything. Okay. Okay? Anything else, Mr. Ready? Any other direction you need from us, sir?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further business. It's now 10:22. Stand adjourned. Thank you and good night.